Good evening, and welcome to this week's broadcast of the Grand Forks City Council Meeting. This meeting is brought to you in part by...
In competition, there are many variables to overcome. Your competitors, your confidence, the terrain, and the unexpected. April 13th, all of these factors will come into play in the Hugo's toughest monster truck tour championship weekend. Returns to Alaris Center with reigning tour champion, who in last year's championship, narrowly defeated Quad Chaos, who is back and looking for redemption, and others who are looking to take them down. Who will prevail? Find out April 13th, the Hugo's toughest monster truck tour championship weekend. Alaris Center.
Let Grand Forks International Airport help you start your next vacation off on the right foot. Grand Forks International Airport offers flights to the sunny destinations of Orlando, Las Vegas, and Phoenix on Allegiant, and connections anywhere in the world through Minneapolis-St. Paul on Delta. Forget the hassle of long drives, parking nightmares, and stressful check-ins. The convenience of flying locally means less headaches and more time for you. Grand Forks International Airport, your airport, simply grand.
How many things in your house connect to the internet? Let's see, computers, smartphones, gaming console, maybe your appliances and lights.
They say that by the year 2020, the average home will have five devices for every one person. I don't know about you guys, but I don't want to be average. We're going to need much better internet.
Midco Extreme Gig is here, life changing.
Know what's in this box? Well, in case your crystal ball is broken, here's a hint. Safe, reliable energy, for starters, but there's also a commitment to this community. See, at Excel Energy, this is our hometown. So we're not just about making a living here, we're about living here. Oh, I wish I had wings.
In our community, we're always delivering. Excel Energy, responsible by nature.
As a farm kid from North Dakota, I was raised to face challenges head-on. But that was put to the test when I was diagnosed with cancer as a teenager. Now, I'm determined to help kids overcome illnesses like I did. So I started my journey at the University of North Dakota. With hard work and determination, I'll help others like my doctors helped me. I'm making my impact, how will you make yours?
Welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is the Grand Forks Growth Fund for Monday, April 1st, 2019, under Item 1, General Business Roll Call.
Weigel, Doppler.
Here.
Weber. Weber, are you on? Mock.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Vean.
Mayor Brown.
Here.
We have a call.
Great, under Item 2, JDA Action Items, item 2.1, LM Power Expansion Project. Ms. Richards, good evening.
Good evening. As you may recall, late last year, this group approved two expansions at the facility that LM rented from the Jay Gay in the industrial park. One was an expansion of their manufacturing space to allow them to build a third 62-meter blade mold. The other expansion was to create a training facility in the space that formerly, part of the space, that had formerly been occupied by Amazon. LM ultimately decided to self-finance the expansion of their manufacturing plant, but we did go ahead with public bidding and documents for the expansion into the LM space. Those bids were opened on March 28th. The bid tabs are attached to your staff report. As you can see, those bids did come in more than 10% above the engineer's estimate. The budget for this work already expanded significantly over the original estimate. So the recommendation after that bid opening, with discussion amongst EAPC, who's the architect on this project, staff at LM and city staff, was to reject these bids, do a little work to scale it back, and move some items out of the base bid perhaps into alternates, and then rebid it. And that is the recommendation before tonight.
Any questions? Moved by Mayor Brown, seconded by Doppler. Any other questions or thoughts? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Good evening. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Under Item 3, adjournment, Mayor Brown moves to adjourn. Marshall seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Ledger.
Hello?
Good work. How are you?
I'm good. Titties?
They don't look good.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Is this Cheers?
No. Cheers now. Okay.
The City of Grand Forks, a proud home University of North Dakota City Council Meeting, Monday, April 1st, 2019, a semi-cultural welcome and roll call.
Weigel, Doppler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Thank you. Mock.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Vean. We have a call.
Thank you. Item 1.2 is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and face the flag. And the council's going to lead us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And next, we have... The... Well, 1.3 is mayor's announcements. It's Public Health Week this week, so I ask you to join me in celebrating the week by reinforcing and engaging in healthy activities. For example, this week will be a great one to go outside and take a walk while the weather cooperates. Coincidentally, it's also the third anniversary of the Inspire Pharmacy. Not only have they done an excellent job bringing another level of pharmacy service to our community, but their efforts also help support the Third Street Clinic. It's a win-win-win. Congratulations on three years. They also say that crisis reveals character, and hopefully your best attributes. And while our flooding is not at a crisis mode, I wanted to say a special thanks to the Grand Forks Air Force Base, UND Football, and the Certech team. Together, these groups assisted our public works teams last week to fill necessary sandbags for our flood fight efforts. And as a proud home University of North Dakota, an extremely proud military community, and a prepared, resilient community, these groups really highlighted some of our best attributes. Thank you for your volunteering and your community service. With that, we go to Item 2, Awards Presentations, Appointments and Proclamation, 2.1.
The new city website update.
Mr. Hager.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. We wanted to take just a couple of minutes to introduce you to the new grandforksgov.com. First of all, thank you for your leadership in supporting, moving forward with a new website, with both the allocations, but also all of you were contributing with the development of the new site, the attributes that we're looking for, and our destiny on getting a much better site that best reflects the city of Grand Forks. As we move forward with any successful project, we had some guiding principles that we were looking at. Number one was with this development, it was simply time. The website was about four years old, and that's pretty darn old in website years, a little bit more than dog years. Secondly, we wanted to demonstrate the website, demonstrated that the city of Grand Forks is tech-savvy, that it reflected the employees in our departments, who are always on the cutting edge, doing things as effectively and efficiently as possible. You'll notice it'll be a mobile focus site that relies heavily with the ability to be responsive, so you'll be able to view it and use it on any device. Next, we wanted to really empower self-service that's more effective for service delivery in many cases, as folks are able to do things on their own and not have to resort to coming in to City Hall or falling into City Hall if they didn't want to. It's also more desired on a lot of our populations that we're targeting, particularly on those who are maybe a little bit of the underage, that they want to do things on their own. Sometimes they want to do things at 2:00 in the morning, and we're not usually answering phones at that point. We also wanted to make sure this was an extremely visual and integrated site, that we provided excellent graphics, and you'll notice the branding and the logos on there, all done internally, and that it's integrated with city social media, as well as with some of the presentations that you've been seeing. Next, we wanted to make sure, of course, that it was accessible. Not only is it the law, and it is the law, but we did want to focus on the accessibility. So we're looking at things, everything from language usage to color contrast, how your images are tagged with alternative descriptions, and how the navigation works to make sure that people with the website readers are able to tab through in an efficient way. So we are not only compliant with the guidelines, which are called WCAG 2.0, but we are continuing to monitor those. We have software that looks at making sure that we could remain compliant, so all of our users can have equitable access to our web information. And lastly, we wanted to make sure that we are nimble and iterative. Nimble in the fact that we have a multi-department management system. Sometimes the best sites can go wrong when folks aren't paying attention to them, and we've got a great internal team. So we've got a distributed management system within our teams, and we're iterative. We're showing you what the website looks like now, and within another week, or two, or three, it'll probably be different again. We'll be continual development on the site as technology progresses, so will we. I want to pay a special thanks to our internal team that worked on that. It was an interdepartmental team of about 12 people who helped from the very first day of redesigning the site, coming up with these types of goals, and working through the difficult processes, making sure it reflected all of our city departments, and was accurately demonstrating all of our services. I also want to thank especially the finance and the IT department, who helped manage, make sure that the site did go forward, not just on the funding side, but we were technically able to do what we hoped to do. And we also had a lot of external assistance when developing the site through the process, and John Bernstein will talk a little bit about that, or a little bit more about that. But we had assistance from folks like at the Park District, and at the University of North Dakota, some other communication professionals, folks who've been through this before, and it's provided a lot of assistance, really leveraging in on the expertise that exists in this community and helping us out as we went along the way. We also had focus groups that we called upon throughout the process to make sure that we were getting outside looks, and not just an internal city-facing look, but making sure that folks from the outside were taking a look, and that if we got it right, and I think as I'm just feeling, I'd say that we got a gut check from some of our external users. Finally, I want to express all appreciation to our Public Information Center team that really did all the work on this one, in leading the project, the main connection with our internet provider, Vision Internet, which is now Brancis, and then shepherding the project through, and the point person on that is John Bernstein, so I'm going to let him take you on a tour and introduce you to the new grandforksgov.com.
Mr. Bernstein, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. So as Pete mentioned, this process probably started about a year ago, as we met internally among city staff, as far as what we wanted the site to do, what we wanted the site to look like, what we didn't like about the old site, and then we started breaking it down from there. It was really good input from many departments within the city of Grand Forks to get where we're at today. So as we take a look at it, this is where we landed, working with Vision Internet, probably last summer, started on design concepts, and we landed on this. We used analytics, very heavily in analytics. We did a heat map of our old site, where people were going to the site, where they were clicking on. There were parts of that old site that I thought were hotbeds for great information, and nobody was clicking on it. So it was an eye-opener for myself. So here we are in the homepage, as we take a look at it, a big search bar right in the middle, and that has worked out pretty well for us so far, with the understanding that we're working with Google on that, and Google's timeline is a little bit different than our timeline. It takes them a few, up to several weeks, to re-scrub the site to make sure all the links are correct. What the issue is, is on some of the search options, it's going to point to the web server. So we ask that you bear with us, that is something that was out of our control, and we hope that correct itself rather quickly. As we scroll through the homepage, you have the search option, very service-oriented. As we look at our analytics, the majority of what people were going to on our site were service-related, looking for jobs, bus routes, information like that. Right now, flood information is very high in our analytics. So we put that right here on services. There's also, as I look at you guys, as you're looking for agendas and upcoming meetings and calendars, we have that right on the homepage as well. News information, news releases, we can also use this as far as posting up-to-date information that may not be news release-worthy, if you will, but to get the information on the homepage. We also have a video section on the home scroll as well, and then towards the bottom are our social media, the links to our Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram accounts. So some of the fun features that we have, as we talked about this, as we were building the site, one idea is, all right, a person wants to do a task, they want to find a job, but they come at it in different ways. We have a neat feature up here, it's called a Service Finder, where you have options, where you can click through, where you can contact, report, find, request, apply for in this case, and then you can come right over here, and you can, job openings, click right through it, and it'll take you to our job page, where all the job openings are, and where applications can be found. Another way you can get to the jobs, obviously, as we're looking at it, you have employment right here on services, or if you use the search function, it takes you right, you have all your options for jobs, and it gets you to the job page as well. All getting to the same place, three different ways to get there, trying to get in the head of the user of ways they will use the site. So when we were looking at the site, as Mr. Hager mentioned, very service-oriented, one page I'm going to use as an example, as we use the term skimmers, swimmers, and divers, there are some people that just kind of gloss over the page if they can't find their information right away, they consider it done. There are some users that will read one, two paragraphs deep, get the information they need, and they'll be done. And then there are a few users, and we have to have the page available to all, who will drill down and want to find line item 93 on the budget. You know, they want to get right down to it, and all that, how we built the site is ways to do that. So let's take a look at, as I use the term, the skimmers, swimmers, and divers on our flood fight page we have built this year. Imagine how the scroll is on the page. We have just some high-level buttons, where you want to find river levels, sandbag information, road closure information, you can find it there as well. You continue to scroll, and you can get some more in-depth information, whether it's from the NDC Extension Service, Grand Forks County Emergency Management, the University of North Dakota has some flood information on their page. We create another level of detail. You get into a frequently asked questions area on the website, on the page, where it gets into even more detail. You just click on the question, and you get the answer. You get into, our news releases tied to our flood fights so far this year, and right now, it's pretty much situation reports that we're doing weekly. And then you can even get down to, I want to sign up and get emails, everything related to floods, so kind of that skimmers, swimmers, and divers, as they drill in deep. One function on the website that we are using prominently is this button feature. The reason for that, as we click through this, the site is responsive. So right now, we're looking at it on the desktop. If I change the size of the page, of course it is. Because I change the size of the page, the site becomes responsive to it. You notice it realigns those buttons, it moved it around. That makes it easier for our mobile users, as they use the page that they're not using a mobile device on a page that maybe isn't meant to be used mobily. So we built the page to be mobile-friendly, and we're starting to see some numbers to that. So in September through February, when we were on our old site, we averaged just under 18,000 page hits a week. And that's about a very, very fair number. That's where we're at. Since we launched the site on May 4th, it's been a little over three weeks, we are averaging 28,000 page hits a week. A couple of factors in there, it's a new site, spring flooding, I think, has contributed to that as well, but our web traffic has gone up. We also suspected that those that use the sites want to use it mobily, so we wanted the site to be as mobile-friendly as possible. Prior to the launch of the site, about half of our website users were on a mobile device, and in the three weeks since we've had the new site, that is now up to 56%. So the majority of the users on the site now are mobile users. So we want to be sure that, be conscious of who's using the site, be conscious of where they're going to. We're constantly looking at analytics, looking at them probably daily, of how the site is being used, and to make sure that the site is as responsive as possible. With that, I will leave it to any questions from the council.
Any questions for Mr. Bernstein, Mr. Sandy?
Mr. Bernstein, great job on the website.
Thank you.
It's really great. I, for one, think that the thing was due, as Mr. Hager pointed out, that the website was old in terms of website years. It's easy to navigate, it's logically laid out, it's obvious that you and the group of people that you were working with spent a lot of time thinking about what's the best way to lay things out and make it easy for people. I've noticed that the website's a little slow. Have you noticed that?
When it first launched, it was, I can speak personally, it was a little bit slow, as it has slowly gotten scrubbed through. It's gotten quicker on my part. Now, I can't speak to the device you're on or anything like that, so...
I just, it's, maybe it's because I'm seeing the scroll circle on the site when it comes up.
Sure.
You typically see that on a website, and perhaps the other sites are all slow, too. They're just not showing me that they're thinking.
That is a good point, though. With the graphic heavy that we wanted, as far as images and high-quality images on the site right now, as you're looking at it, you see people sliding. We're obviously not going to be up like that all the time, we're actually hunting for, not hunting, but looking for our spring pictures that will get up here soon. But along those lines, since there's lots of graphics to load, there was a bit of lag on the initial load time of the site. So that is, we're very conscious of, we just can't have it sit black or sit empty, so we have that setup screen, if you will, with the city logo in the desktop. So yes, we are conscious, the initial load is a little bit slower, that's tied to the graphics we have on the page.
I think, moving in a different direction, I think, you know, as we talked about, and the time was right for doing the new website, I think we need to continue to look at ways to make it easier for our citizens to get services from the city of Grand Forks. I, for one, think we need to do things differently in terms of providing service for our constituents, in which case, I'd love to see us add the ability to apply for a building permit online, schedule an inspection, you name it, all of the services that we provide, I'd love if we could add that at some point. I know it's not going to happen in the next even months, but we should be thinking about that, because more often, people are looking for, how can I make this easy, how can the city make me easy? Anyway, I'd love to see that. The last comment that I have is, are we going to implement this same branding on our 311 app at some point?
Yes, we've actually started that process. There's several hoops to hop through to do that, but yes, we've already started that with our new logo, and to get that...
Color schemes.
Color schemes, all that, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Bernstein? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next, we go to Item 2.2.
Flood update.
Mr. Grasser, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of City Council. Starting at the strategic level, the National Weather Service, we don't have any products from the Weather Service beyond what they provided a few weeks ago, the probabilistic curve, if you remember that. What they have been providing is twice-weekly updates on the progress of the snow melt. And what they've started to see, because we have had a good melt, we've had little or no precipitation over the last three weeks, they are starting to talk in terms of guidance. If we don't get a bunch of precipitation and things during the crest, we might be at the lower end of those probabilities. They're talking 75 to 90%. What that means for us is probably more in that 47 to 49-foot range, as opposed to before, we were talking 50 and 50-plus. Again, it's all contingent on precipitation. They did just send out another snow melt guidance today, basically saying the river down in Wapentin is probably crested, because most of that snow is gone. Pretty much everything north of that is still in flux. They've been adjusting the Fargo-Morgan curve, I think, to match the new predictions for temperatures. Supposed to get pretty warm by the end of the week, so I think by the weekend here, most of the snow will be gone, suspecting Grand Forks south, anyway. Some of the updated things that we've done, we did have a Shady Ridge neighborhood meeting last week, pretty well-attended, and hopefully we answered questions there, and talked about some of the activities the city can provide for that neighborhood to keep them from getting wet quite as early as they might. So basically, we can do some things out there pretty easily to keep that area dry to a flood gauge of about 53 feet. So I think that was received with welcome from the neighborhood. Couple other things, just, we have done a project this year with putting in new controls on the two flood stations. Those were tested this week and last week, and they successfully passed their tests for operating. So that's good news as the flood is coming up. Maybe also some activity that may be seen by the public near some of the flood walls and things. The street department is talking about starting to pre-position some of the stop logs that they'll otherwise put up at those locations. So if you see some aluminum beams starting to show up in some areas, that's basically what they're doing, is starting to pre-position those things. The last thing I'm going to mention, too, I've had a couple of questions. At some point, the Weather Service will do a graphic like this, and I don't know if you can see it very well, but it starts to get the curve where they're actually starting to show the prediction. Again, they haven't, on the East End, they haven't done anything really any farther north than Fargo. They've done a couple on the Tributaries, but that product is not available yet for the city of Grand Forks. Not sure exactly when that will come out, it depends on the snow melt, I think, and how the water's getting into the streams, but maybe by, towards the end of this week, possibility. So, because again, otherwise, we're working on those probabilistic things, but eventually we will get this type of a product.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Grasser? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
2.3.
Legislative update.
Mr. Hager.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. A quick legislative update. We're now on the 57th of 80 days in the legislature. In hockey terms, we're entering the third period, which is really the period of conference committees. This is where the dynamic of the legislative session changes, where we had a lot of testimony, a lot of trips down to Dismarque and presenting information in the first two periods, and now it's in the conference committees, where the contested bills, where the House and the Senate do not agree exactly on specific bills, where we meet together in different conference committees and hammer things out. On the Grand Forks side, we're really focused a lot on the budget bills that are remaining. It's mostly budget bills that are remaining at this point, so it's about the dollars and the cents. Things seem to be moving well on a lot of fronts. The water infrastructure, the infrastructure in general has moved well. We got really good news today, that House Bill 1435 regarding the statewide interoperable radio network moved out of the Senate, restoring $40 million in grant funding. It was previously to the House side, it was only, $120 million was all in loan funding, and $40 million was restored in the Senate version to grant funding. So that's a plus on our side, and I think a lot of that has to do with some really wonderful testimony, probably provided by some of our folks, Chief Lorenz and Becky Alt, who've been spearheading that effort on there. So there are some good news moving forward. We had good news this past week on military-friendly related bills with 2306 and 1053, which offer benefits to our retired military. So those are moving forward. One is moving to the governor already, and one is, again, is in one of the conference committees to iron out some small differences. So we will continue to work with our local legislators on this conference side. It's the time where we stay close to the phones, and stay close to the computers. As they're coming in and out of conference committees, things can change pretty quickly, so we try to keep a pretty good communication line open with our folks. I don't believe that I have any other specific updates on any specific bills, but would certainly be willing to respond to any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Hager? Thank you, sir. Item 3, Public Hearings and Second Readings of Ordinances, 3.1.
Public hearing and second reading of an ordinance amending section 9-04041, Article 4 of the Grand Forks City Code relating to gaming.
I'll open a public hearing on 3-1. I'll close the public hearing on 3-1. Ms. Marshall.
Yes, I would ask to be recused from this motion.
Need a motion to recuse? Miss, motions, Ms. Doppler, seconds. We're voting on the motion to recuse, Ms. Marshall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're recused. Mr. Sandy? You want a motion?
I'll move through.
And then Ms. Mock, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, thank you. Ms. Marshall's recused. Item 3.2.
Public hearing and second reading of an ordinance amending section 21-0205 of the Grand Forks City Code relating to domestic distillery, also attached as a memo from our Public Health Director... Public Health Director Debbie Swanson regarding the sample size.
So I'll open a public hearing on 3.2. Ms. Swanson wishes to address the council, and then Mr. Vasacheck wishes to address the council. Ms. Swanson.
Mayor Brown, members of the council, you should have before you a memo that I distributed last week recommending a change to the total limit of fluid ounces that can be served under this ordinance as a sample. The recommendation comes from the National Institutes of Health, U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, on the thresholds for low-risk drinking. And for women, that would be no more than three drinks per day or seven drinks per week, and for men, no more than four drinks per day on any single day and 14 per week. So this, I feel that the sample size of one ounce is certainly permissible, but that the total ounces should be reduced from six to three, or whatever guidance the council wishes to pursue. But I did want to bring that to your attention, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Swanson? Thank you. Mr. Vasacheck wishes to address the council.
Phil Vasacheck, 1315 Walnut, Mayor Brown, council members. I just want to say that I agree with the recommendation.
Thank you very much. So we'll close the public hearing on 3.2? And then Ms. Marshall?
I would like to make a motion that we amend the original draft of the ordinance to align with the recommendations from our Public Health Department, including that, consisting of the change in section 3 on page 2, from six fluid ounces per customer to three fluid ounces per customer.
And then Mr. Sandy, do you second that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so now we need to motion to amend the proposal, so all in favors, Ms. Marshall.
Mayor Brown, members of council, I'm wondering if you could also include in the mayor to set the fees as recommended that were before you, if you want to do that at this time.
That would be fine.
Okay, so I have a motion to amend before us. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Carries, thank you. Now we need to vote on the motion as amended. Mr. Sandy, motions, Ms. Marshall, seconds. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Carries, thank you. 3.3.
Public hearing and second reading of an ordinance repealing Article 12 of Chapter 21 relating to Chad's New Merchants and reenacting Article 12 of Chapter 21 of Grand Forks City Code relating to door-to-door sales and solicitations.
I'm opening a public hearing on 3.3. We'll close the public hearing on 3.3. Need a motion? The motion is closed, so now we need a motion to amend, Mr. Workup.
Mayor Brown, members of the council, after the last time this was read for the first reading, Mr. Swanson made some changes. Unfortunately, they didn't get into the electronic packet. You'll notice on your desk that I do have, I've provided you each a copy of the updated ordinance, and the changes are marked with the additions in red and deletions in blue. And what the city attorney's office would recommend would be to make a motion to amend the ordinance, and then if that passes, then make a motion to pass the second reading of the ordinance as amended.
So we need a motion to amend? Ms. Marshall? We need a second for Ms. Dockler? Do you want to take a moment to read the?
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest we table for the next time to be, so we have an opportunity to review this.
So we have a motion at the table?
Well, that wasn't a motion, that was a suggestion.
Okay, so we have a friendly suggestion at the table, so we...
If others want to take time to sit and read this, that's fine.
Okay, so we can, would you withdraw?
Less time is of the essence.
It's time. Okay, so you'll withdraw your motion, and your second?
I will withdraw my motion, yes.
And then we have, we'll take a motion to table? And then we have a second? Ms. Mock?
Sure.
Okay, so we can't debate this, so then we vote on that? All in favor, table till when?
Next comes to you.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Carries, thank you. This is table to the next council meeting. 3.4.
Public hearing and second reading of ordinance amending section 21-2808 relating to violations penalties noticed, appeal of tobacco license violations.
Open the public hearing on 3.4. Close the public hearing on 3.4. Council action on 3.4. Mr. Sandy, motion? Ms. Marshall, seconds. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Carries, thank you. 3.5.
Public hearing and second reading of ordinance amending section 21-0234 relating to hearing on alleged violations and violation of alcoholic beverage ordinances.
We'll open the public hearing on 3.5. We'll close the public hearing on 3.5. Council action on 3.5. Mr. Sandy, motions. Ms. Marshall, seconds. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Carries, thank you. 3.6.
Public hearing and second reading of an ordinance adopting section 3-0402 relating to non-substantive corrections of ordinances and city code revisions.
I'll open the public hearing on 3.6. We'll close the public hearing on 3.6. And now we need a motion to amend the item. Mr. Sandy, motions. Ms. Mock, seconds. All in favor to amend, say aye.
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 Oppose? Carries, thank you. Now we need to vote on the motion as amended. Mr. Sandy, motions. Ms. Marshall, seconds. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Carries, thank you. 3.7.
Public hearing on resolution of necessity and determination of protest for Project 8015, District Number 730, 2019, Mill and Overlay, from 17th Street South to 17th Avenue South and Continental Drive and Willow Drive, and Project 8019, Point 1, Point 2, and Point 3, District 736, reconstruct of Cherry Street, 14th to 17th Avenue South, and Mill and Overlay of Cherry Street, 11th to 14th, and streetlights. No protests have been received by our office.
So I open the public hearing on 3.7A and B. We'll close the public hearing on 3.7A and B. Council action?
Move through.
Mr. Sandy, Ms. Marshall, seconds. Mr. Sandy, motions. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Carries, thank you. Item 4, action items. Who would like action items pulled for discussion? Hearing none, that leaves 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5, 4.6, 4.7. For a motion and a second. Mr. Sandy, motions. Ms. Mock, seconds. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Carries, do we have any introductions to ordinance? None. Item 5, informational items, 5.1.
Investment portfolio as of February 28th.
And then item 6, citizen requests, I have none. Item 7, approval of a medicine bill, 7.1.
The vendor list and engineer's estimate as presented.
Need a motion to pay the bills, Ms. Dockler, motions?
There's no minutes. There's no minutes.
Okay, and then Ms. Mock, seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Bills are paid, there are no minutes this evening. Item 8, city minister, the comments, Mr. Phelan.
Mayor Brown, I spoke with Mayor Brown and Council President Sandy today. We are planning to have our April 29th strategic planning session that we've done in town. So I'll send out additional information, and we'll concentrate on the mayor's 2020 budget that we've been working on, so we'll give you some preliminary highlights of the budget, the salary plan, and those sorts of things. And then we can also integrate what this session may bring us. The Prairie Dog bill was obviously an important infrastructure bill, it should bring us a little over $12 million. Some of that will come in 2020. I think the majority of that money will come in 2021, but I think it will be integrated in the 2020 budget. As well as the State Water Commission appropriation bill, we have a request for $9.9 million for our last of our 250 casia for our water treatment plant, so we'll know more information on those two things. So we'll focus some energy on that. The other item that Council President Sandy and I have been having conversations about, we still need to bring back the housing and growth development conversation, so we will plan to put that as our, maybe our one policy area to take a deeper dive. So those are the two areas, but there's still time if there's some things you'd like to discuss at this next session on April 29th. I'll make sure that I get that on there and provide a briefing. So we'll probably have a handout of just a general overview of many of those things, but we'll concentrate on those other two things unless we have one more of a deeper dive on other things. So without any questions, I'll send out some updates until April 29th.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Item 9, mayor and council member comments. Councilwoman Dockler? Mr. Weber?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just happy birthday to Inspired Pharmacy, and thanks for mentioning that earlier.
Thank you. Ms. Mock? Or Ms. Marshall?
Yeah, just wanted to announce that April is National Autism Awareness Month, and there is an event in town to celebrate autism awareness and to provide very helpful information from a variety of for-profits, nonprofits, and governmental entities. And that will take place on April 13th, that's a Saturday morning, from 9:30 to 11:30 at the UND Wellness Center, and that will be an autism awareness walk.
Okay. There's also Spin for Kids on April 13th, I believe, fundraiser.
Are you spinning, sir?
I'm coaching and cheerleading. I do what I do best, I'll cheerlead. Council President Sandy?
Thank you. Public Works has been, I know they've been out cleaning up some areas of town with the snow melting. Surprising how much garbage collects and millions in areas.
It really is.
I appreciate the work the people do. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Also, again, congratulations to Inspired Pharmacy for three years and for helping the Third Street Clinic. It's Public Health Week, please get out and do something healthy. And thank you to the Grand Forks Air Force Base, UND football and athletic team for helping us do sandbags, and with any hope, we won't need them, so.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn. Quickly, Ms. Mark, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? We stand adjourned, thank you.